Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey. Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Robin.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Svenja.
Here.
Councilman Mazza.
Here.
President Gold.
Almighty God, let this lady for our community, with a strong sense of justice and fair play in every way we do, above all, may we seek out your holy will, give us the strength to follow it regardless of all human considerations. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, as public speaking, and the resident of the taxpayer, like the rest of the councilmen and members, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, we have five minutes. Katie.
Catherine Marie, 408 Franx Street.
Forward, member.
Franx Street.
Member, ready.
As a member of Ellis State, we would like to have this be canceled for all your help with successfully at Ellis and Park. We are in the process of healing the wounds between the lines and the nation is there. And pray that God has worked because we do need that. And we also thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else, if you're the resident of the taxpayer, like the rest of the councilmen and members, please step forward, speak to me and address for the record, we have five minutes. Once again, and the resident of the taxpayer, like the rest of the councilmen and members, please step forward, speak to me and address for the record, seeing on, looking for what should be, hoping he don't agree.
Ordinance number 4432, authorize the adoption of a bond order in the amount of $20 million with a down payment of $1 million for the reconstruction of the Elizabeth waterfront arena of recreation pier, the height by can roll through with Marseyanti Malid Jackson Park with 90% reimbursement available to all by FEMA.
You have the right to vote number 4432, anyone who orders like to address point number 4432, see now.
Ordinance number 4433, authorize the adoption of a bond order in the amount of $5 million with a down payment of $250,000 for the renovation of the Erks Leaven Pool.
You have the right to vote number 4433, anyone who wants to address point number 4433, see now.
Ordinance number 4434, authorize the adoption of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 2.44 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Department of Neighborhood Services, in its entirety assigning its bureaus to existing departments and amending other portions of the city code accordingly.
You have the right to vote number 4434, anyone who, on public like, address point number 4434, see now. But if you send my colleague to have a suspension, they'll read up the petition and petition and report support. Move on towards our first reading.
Ordinance number 4435, grant to be put to impairment to the arena consulting group Somerset, New Jersey, on behalf of Centro Americano Water Repair, to perform environmental remediation work to install one additional groundwater monitoring well in the public right-of-way along the west side of Fourth Avenue, between the street and sidewalk across 338 South Fifth Street.
You have the right to vote number 4435, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question.
Ordinance number 4436, amend the Code of the City of Elizabeth relating to no pardon 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM during school days on the west side of Pennsylvania Avenue.
You have the right to vote number 4436, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. What question?
Ordinance number 4437, amend Chapter 10.28.55 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled no pardon in all towns on certain streets specifically to add Edgar Place.
You have the right to vote number 4437, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question.
Ordinance number 4438, amend Ordinance Number 4154 adopted September 14, 2010, authorizing one year moratorium for the issuance of sanctions and enforcement of certain provisions of Chapter 10.28.40 and Chapter 10.28.50 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, specifically to expand said moratorium an additional year.
You have the right to vote number 4438, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
During our pre-conference last week, I asked, what was the deadline? Is it going to happen in a pact? For the moratorium, yes.
I believe the government's, I think it has, had run out, expired. We, I have.
But when?
We had an extension for another year.
But when was it running out? Because I thought something said that it didn't end March, April of last year.
I spoke to Rock, uh, we were in March, uh, it was ending.
But when that is, can we just put this on hold until I find the information? A motion to take.
Second.
Thank you.
I know she tried to cast in March to hold the convention, second by Councilman Robin, roll call.
Just take it.
Take it. What should we do?
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. Point number 4430, take it.
Ordinance number 4439, rescinding Ordinance Number 4411 adopted September 10, 2013, which authorizes establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Norma Melkine, 112th Avenue.
You have the right to vote number 4439, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question.
Ordinance number 4440, authorize establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Wendy and Robinson to 226 Second Avenue.
You have the right to vote number 4440, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question.
Ordinance number 4441, authorize the adoption of a bond order in the amount of $1 million with a down payment of $50,000 for general renovations and improvements to the city hall, cupola stairs, structural sidewalks, and basements.
You have the right to vote number 4441, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman.
This is just for general, is anything wrong with the cupola now? Because according to the bond agreements, it just says a million down, a million dollars down with a down payment of 50,000 for general renovations and improvements. Is there something wrong with the cupola now? Or we just anticipated something more wrong with it?
I believe the director has some, some information for us on the, as I said. I spoke to the director and what happened now, there's no validation in the cupola. Uh, they, they, they let me all know that it's historic. And then historic, we're replacing with the type of wood that's already paid for, making this up for many years. But not having a validation in that cupola, it would have been separated because of leak. So now we have a code of validation in there and to prevent the, uh, uh, the wood from separating. Uh, so that's what they're going to be doing now, hopefully this will be the end of this work of the cupola, hopefully, I assume.
Was the cupola damaged because of the sandstorm last year?
What is what?
Was it damaged because of the sand, because of the sandstorm?
There was damage.
To the cupola?
I was told, that I admittedly, I was told that it just separated from the wood, Councilwoman, because of no validation. I think, you know, if you have any, uh, attic or, or roof, you need validation to prevent this separation. So that's what they're going to have, they're closing that, so now we can finish and install there, hopefully that should be good.
Mr. President?
Yes, uh, at the time of the earthquake several years ago, I remember talking to the director
and did say that the cupola was damaged during that period of time. And I also noticed that in his letter here, he also refers to sanding.
So then why can't we use sanding dollars to repair the cupola?
How is it possible?
Then why can't we use sanding dollars to repair it? That was possible because of the storm or hurricane?
I understand.
Mr. President?
Councilman.
I think that, that, uh, support move this project along. However, Councilwoman raises a good point, that if we can show that part of damage is attributable to her sanding, we should be applying also to reverse to FEMA.
I don't know if they can claim for sanding, sanding can, if sanding was joyful.
Now, I would, no, Mr. President, my recommendation would be to, to proceed with this, uh, process here, but to ask the director of Public Works if since there's a possibility that some of it was caused by hurricane sanding, if in addition, you could not fire FEMA or see what funds may have happened to build to offset part of this.
Okay, like, Councilman, ask.
Uh, Mr. President, we already spent 445,000 down sometime in 2005, 2006. Apparently, the cupola is very old and at the time they were trying to save the old wood structure and they did the best that probably they could, but then due to the hurricane, whether it's sandy or rain or whatever, caused additional damage of water, the wind did some damage with the earthquake. My question to me is, the stairs, structure. I remember one time, it came before city council, whether we actually voting on the structure of the stair to be repaired. And after, I don't know what kind of festival was out there from the city or accidental whenever moved the stage, they also moved the railing, and we already spent additional money. So we do have a good rendering, pictures and evidence that was done in the past. This needs to be done. My question is, whatever happened to the assurance for the structure of the stairs? And then they're talking about sidewalk and messory, that means we have to go all sidewalk and messory of the bricks of city hall? We need to get more information, Mr. President. I mean, I will vote for first reading, but we need to still add more information. We only got a small piece of the information.
You should have some information on the desktop, maybe your desktop.
It's just pictures, but like my colleagues, we can concede, but then we know this is first reading, but we do want more answers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
I, I just wanted to follow along on the conversation with my colleagues. Back in '05, '06, he spent almost half a day, dollars repairing pretty significant damage. You can tell from the pictures where it looked like back in the time. Some of those pictures that were taken recently, uh, show additional water damage to the same items that we repaired. So my concern is that if we're going to do this again, then whatever steps we're taking, whether it's engineers, architects, they need to put something in place that would protect the cupola from water damage. That lasts almost six or seven years, and it's, it's got to last for at least 15, 20 years so that water doesn't, it isn't that part of it. So whatever they do, I see that the number is now estimated at $1 million. Really need to put something in place that we're not going to be back here in five years and again, really undermining because of additional water damage. If you're going to do it, it requires, right? So that's my comments on this.
Councilman, I can't, I can guarantee, but I just think, if you look at that second paragraph on what the correct signal, if you measure out the, uh, by black relation, I've said before, I think, I'm telling you guys from all horns, and you know the lack of relation in the roof or, or attic, without that population, it won't cause correct even separation. So I think you want to write right now, but I can't guarantee, but I think at least we're, want to write right to do that hopefully.
I have said it before, so. At least I can say I can get my bedroom there, so we're going to do it, we're going to do it right.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question. Hope here, everybody, the search of the four on orders shall take place at the city council, how, Tuesday, November 12, 2013, December 30. On points of offense.
Ordinance number 4432, authorize the adoption of a bond order in the amount of $20 million with a down payment of $1 million for reconstruction of the Elizabeth waterfront arena of recreation pier, the height by can roll through with Marseyanti Malid Jackson Park with 90% reimbursement available to all by FEMA.
You have the right to vote number 4432, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question.
Ordinance number 4433, authorize the adoption of a bond order in the amount of $5 million with a down payment of $250,000 for the renovation of the Erks Leaven Pool.
You have the right to vote number 4433, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question.
Ordinance number 4434, authorize the adoption of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 10.44 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Department of Neighborhood Services in its entirety, signing its bureaus to existing departments and amending other portions of the city code accordingly.
You have the right to vote number 4434, would you please?
Move the ordinance to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. I ask for the question.
I would just question those getting, please get in, Mr. President. Torres. I would like to make a motion to suspend, suspend the rules, need to see project.
Second.
May we just suspend the rules?
Second.
Uh, motions, make some motions by Councilman Torres, suspend the rule, second by Councilwoman, and one, just Perkins-Gestey, roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye.
There's two items. The first letter is dated October 17, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend a resolution adopted on August 27, 2013, authorizing the Elizabeth Development Company to administer an on-the-job training and placement program in partnership with Elizabeth Port Pressatarian Center, specifically to reflect the change in partnership with the Elizabeth Development Company and Retail Skills Center for the period of October 15, 2013, to October 14, 2014. The second letter is dated October 17, 2013, from Gordon &amp; Hoss, CEO and resident, Greater Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce, is advising that pursuant to ordinance number 4387, Section 5B, subject to confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby appoint the following individuals, as per the delineated list, to Certain Management Corporation Board of Directors of the Elizabeth Destination Marketing Organization.
You have the right to the resolution, would you please?
Move the resolutions to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilman, it's, uh, President, I have a question about the letter from the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Mr. President, I recently received a letter from your appointed Councilman Questa and myself, which was this oldest. Uh, however, can I say my name in the letter?
Aye.
You can't even read the letter.
Well, it's a little difficult, but.
You're correct. It's just a frank question.
Councilman, stop. Frank question. Yeah, yes, Councilman, it's off. Uh, the length of the letter. So, we.
Can we make a amendment to the resolution?
I'll make a amendment, yes. I'd like to make a final amendment, Mr. President. I'll say it in a minute.
Not second, okay.
Uh, so I do a motion on.
Underfill maybe a little bit.
And I think while we're doing that amendment, we also correct this spelling of Councilman Questa's last name. It should be with the C.
It's a C.
Thank you, okay. I'm on the way to the, I hear, a career, I'll say.
We hope they have a little circuitry over there, so.
Motion of the amendment, the head councilman, the job is, he's going to be the opening.
No, it's not an option, I think, as he go on, he will have. It's just two figures of city council.
They're going to have one, they're going to have one, Councilman, according to the, uh, the ordinance. But Councilman Questa is going to be the, uh, the one person, Councilman Gonzalez is going to be that, that side is going to be great in the opening of the ordinance, uh, because the ordinance is called one. Uh, I had this discussion with both.
So they share one vote, okay.
I had to meet with Councilman, Gonzalez, and the question, they're aware of that, so we.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, before, is that what you guys, yeah?
Yeah, they're sharing one vote. Councilman has one vote, yeah.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
I, Mazza, uh, acts on the resolution.
Put a penny on it.
On the, sorry, five minutes. Now, the actual, on the resolution. Two, I imagine, now, you know. Got two.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gestey.
I would, um, rate the chamber excuse on the, um, EDC.
Okay.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Robin.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Svenja.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. Let you guys know I had asked, put Councilman, uh, Gonzalez in the audience, I don't know why, it was okay, but. Thank you, sir. Uh, new business.
Authorize capital ordinance in the amount of $1 million for general renovations and improvements to city hall. Confirmed the reappointment of Honorable Danny J. Russell to serve as temporary judge of municipal court for a term of one year commencing November 1, 2013, through October 31, 2014, in amount not to exceed $60,000. Authorize the award contract to Peneboz Inc., New Jersey, for the furniture, postage, equipment, maintenance, and supplies for the period October 15, 2013, through September 30, 2014, and cost not to exceed $225,000. Authorize the award contract to Pertridge Fleet Services Inc., Milford, Delaware, for the purchase of 2014 Jeep Patriot, Patriot sport vehicles for the Department of Public Works at a total cost of $37,102.50. Authorize the award contract to Thomas &amp; Reuters, a division of West Publishing Corporation, Eagan, Minneapolis, Fort Minnesota, for the purchase of where based data access services for the law department and the municipal court division for the period October 1, 2013, to October 31, 2013, and cost not to exceed $10,000. Permit the purchasing agent to make the necessary arrangements with propertyboom.com to auction and pound of property in possession of the Elizabeth Police Department. Authorize the award contract to Lloyds of London, London, England, through the agent of record, Otterstone Agency, Hankover, Co., New Jersey, for a policy and insurance covering the city's foreclosed properties for the period October 1, 2013, to October 1, 2014, and an annual premium of $1,100. Authorize the award contract to River 23 Auto Mall, Butler, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto parts and light vehicle vehicles for various departments for the period October 12, 2013, through June 25, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $30,000.
You have the right to the resolution, would you please?
Move the resolutions to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next second, comments.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Naza?
I, uh, don't recall seeing no, even better part of the, uh, the otherwise of capital ordinances in the amount of one million dollars besides the authorization of million dollars for the cupola stair structure sidewalk, and now we also authorize another million dollars for renovation and improvement of city hall. How do we get this at the agenda?
I was gonna raise the same question, Mr. President. Is this the same ordinance? Is this the same million dollars that we got, two million dollars?
They.
That part of the, the couple.
Ordinance, city hall, same.
Let's see what she's got.
I'm hoping that the same one, Councilman, this, I, uh, I don't think we actually, I think that's cool. I don't know why, but we have that.
And the question is, why do we have to authorize an ordinance which is loaded in
It's good, it's good, just because.
Same.
What do you mean for buying one, can you say?
We're not sure about this. Could be for spinning, we're not sure.
Well, usually when we spend it, we'll see what we're gonna spend it on, which is can't, uh, wait a while, Jerry. Mr. President, since we don't know what it's for, I'd like to make a motion to have a one resolution until we get some clarification, bring that the next one.
On second, Mr. President, a little bit.
Yeah, it's the cupola stair structural improvement sidewalks, the maintenance, that.
It's the same.
This was in the, um, ordinance forty-four forty-one.
So, we don't have a resolution?
For the capital budget. It's the budget. For the improvements.
I thought it's.
To do the renovations.
I'm sorry. You wanna repeat that?
It's part of the couple, that's what I thought it was.
So.
This, this one, the first one, to authorize, that should not be capital ordinance, it should be for the capital budget, to include that amount into the, um, allocations for the capital.
Right, so what we're doing with the resolution is amending the budget to.
To add.
To add and then, add, ah, okay, so the, the, the ordinance should be authorized and amended to capital budget.
And why do we have?
I would draw my motion to table.
But draw. So, we may.
Second, secondly, everything is already set.
So, vote.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Seden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Naza.
Aye.
Authorize the void contract to Courier-Printing Corporation, deposit New York, for the furniture of the printing recycling brochures for the Department of Public Works for a term of year period in an amount not exceeding twenty-one thousand dollars. Authorize the void contract to Hartford Insurance Company, through the agent of record, Hughes Plumber Associates, to provide a policy of insurance covering all auxiliary police officers for the period July one, two thousand thirteen, to June thirty, two thousand fourteen, at an annual premium of three hundred ten dollars. Authorize the proper city officials to enter into agreement with the Elizabeth Youth Theater Ensemble, where is that, to provide a creative courage workshop for students of the Building Future Leaders Program in the total amount of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Authorize the proper city officials to apply and accept program year two thousand fifteen County Union Workforce Investment Act Youth Employment Grant in an amount not exceeding seventy-five thousand dollars. Authorize the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the Police and Customs and Electricians Association for the period July one, two thousand thirteen, to June thirty, two thousand seventeen. Authorize the proper city officials to enter into a right-of-way agreement with United Federal DAB LLC to utilize the public right of use to install fiber optic cable on existing poles and/or conduits owned by utility companies within the city for a period of fifteen years. Permit Miss Michelle Nelson, proprietor of House Walker Publishing LLC, doing business as the Juice Elizabeth, from installing and maintaining four solar powered cell phone recharging kiosks on the public sidewalks known as eighty Broad Street, one Broad Street, one eighty North Avenue, and ten eighty-nine Elizabeth Avenue. Authorize the tax collector to declare the tax sales certificate for the property located at nine forty-three, nine forty-seven East Grand Street, known as Block Eight, Lot Four Eighty-four, sold on June seventh, two thousand ten, null and void. In compliance with the State Fiscal Year two thousand fourteen Appropriations Act, city council is requested to review the quarterly two thousand fourteen State Fiscal Year budget revenues and appropriations ending September thirty, two thousand thirteen. Authorize the proper city officials to execute an agreement for community development program funding for city thirty-nine year two thousand thirteen with nonprofit agencies listed on Schedule A, the period July one, two thousand thirteen, to June thirty, two thousand fourteen, in the total allocation amount of two million, seventy-six thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars. Establish a lien on the property located at ten thirty-seven Williams Street in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for the partial demolition of said premises. Establish a lien on the property located at two thirteen, Andrew Place, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars for the demolition of said premises. Authorize the void of contract to Tom Home Construction, Inc., Mount Martin, New Jersey, for the rehabilitation of the Veterans Memorial Waterfront Park at a cost of three million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars.
You have the read of the resolution, question pleasure?
Move the resolutions to a vote, Mr. President.
Move next, Secretary, comments?
Mr. President, two comments.
Councilman Gilbert?
Uh, one, can you find out how many of your kids are building future leaders program by voting to participate in this creative courage workshop?
How many kids?
How many kids? Number two, Mr. President, we approved, uh, gave permission to Miss Nelson to install one cell phone recharge kiosk back in June. That's been installed yet, and I were being asked to authorize three more. I told you, I'll apply, you should have installed one, we're gonna see how it works, and then, one has not been installed.
I think that's what we had before, so we discussed it, the council.
Mr. President? Miss Nelson came to our, uh, janitor session, and Mr. Travis, I explained that, uh, they had any indication about adding a couple additional locations. Uh, the fact that the one was not installed was not, uh, did not come up during the, uh, janitor session. So, we haven't even seen one of these, and we're already moving to step two? That's a concern to me.
Mr. President, just to reiterate, um, my council colleague just stated, Councilman Keenan, um, Miss Nelson, she did come to the meeting, and our assistant VA says he is working directly with her on this process, so we all felt comfortable at that time to allow for extra installations throughout the city, based on the fact that she's working directly with the administration in this process.
Am I right that one has not been installed?
Excuse me?
One has not been installed.
It doesn't matter, the fact that she's working directly with the administration, that she's doing the writing, she waited a whole week to even put this issue on, on our agenda, I don't think that's an issue that one has not been installed.
To me, this.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Grover, that question I actually asked, and I think it's a good thing that happened, that instead of just the one, at the time, it wasn't really feasible, that we're going back to four, that's what I heard, Miss Nelson, that until it goes to final reading, it, she was instructed by, uh, what was the name, the gentleman that was?
Travis.
Travis, I'm sorry.
Administration.
By the administration to comply, the application according to the orders, which she did, and this is something good, because it's not gonna cost the taxpayers anything, and I asked that question, if anything goes wrong, there is a section that we're also about to move. That was specifically asked and explained by the undersigned person here. So, as a word council, the most of those things are, and let's give them a try, it's for people, young people, for the people that are gonna be using.
I, I, I have no problem, I'm just regularly issued that we wanted to see one installed back in June, when one was not installed, that, that's my issue.
That's what it was, man, it was originally one, and then they come up with four, I think that three or four together. You're right.
Okay, I, I, I think she has been patient, she's worked very hard, uh, she's dedicated, uh, and I'm anxious to see that, but it plays a, I believe it'll be a good thing, uh, soon. It's time for that, vote.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Excuse me, the program, I own everything else.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Seden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Naza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, our best, best.
Establishing handicap parking spaces in front of premises located at twelve, Franklin Street, six eleven Northwood Terrace, one twelve Front Street. Delete the following handicap parking spaces in front of front of premises located at five eighty, Enfield Avenue, and ten twelve North Avenue. Authorize the addition of a bus stop on the Amway Avenue, northbound, on the east dirty side, at Bayway Avenue, far side. Pay utility bills for the bingo and rental licenses.
You have the read of the resolution, question pleasure?
Move the resolutions to a vote, Mr. President.
Next, comments? Vote.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gastin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Seden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Naza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye. Always the best, I'm not even, isn't that, health, and certain, title, Sierra Passion, and Mr. CDR, this is South Florida, uh, Chairman of the Justice, London, Great Court, uh, named by the GNC, maximum as a forty under forty, give a combination.
Mr. President? I, I would like to add Ella Wagner, uh, she was a resident, then in the fourth ward of there for a very long time, and did many different things in the community, um, but now she's moved into Florida, so I just wanna recognize her and thank her behalf of city council for everything she's done for our city.
Just answer that question, Ella.
Ella, Ella Wagner, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wagner.
Yes, governor.
Excellent, excellent.
I'll, I'll give you a lot of this.
You guys can just stay, I'll be here. Thank you. I love you very much. Uh, a boarder, a boarder, a full flag, a full flag, red, white, yellow, yellow, and I go, uh, Aurora, Karan, all right. Vote for the boarder. We call stand for, boarder, please. Also, Joe Johnson.
Hallelujah.